Hello viewers! We're starting up the stream, that was cringy.
That was... slightly. What is going on chat? Well-
Okay, we're playing Minecraft.
I mean, but you see, the thing is, um, once you- once streamers actually develop a popularity, they do begin to go... Um, they do begin to do stuff like that. And it works, you know? It works. But you see, but when you do it, when you don't have very many viewers, it sounds cringy. So like, I dunno. But clearly, it's working for bigger channels, so like-
Yeah, I mean, let's get on that potato SMP.
Quite the conundrum. Anyone? Uh, what was it? Yeah, Greg's- I feel bad for- I feel bad for Greg's house. Um, alright, let's organize. I need to organize my entry a little bit, I think I'm gonna do that. And speech, where on- where's Lucas? Where- where's... Another problem is, I mean, I feel- people- I mean, like, how comfortable- I know Lucas might not be comfortable with me calling him.
Yeah.
Uh, me using his name on stream, but like, what do you want me to say?
Ghost.
Tell Ghost, tell Ghost to get the heck on here. Actually, that's better. That's not terrible. I mean, it would be worse with my name. Tell Kinghamster to get on the server, like. Tell Hamster to-
Yeah, I know, right?
It just doesn't work. It just doesn't work. Something like Dream is a lot better.
I know.
Or maybe it isn't. Maybe it's the whole, yeah, you've been acclimatized to it, you're used to it. Maybe if your name was Dream, it wouldn't sound right.
Alright, so, I asked chat, which currently includes August, if he can hear both of us, and he said it sounds good.
August?
Williams.
Okay. I know a lot of Augusts.
Parkour guy.
Corner rail. Tell- ask him when he's releasing a new video. I thrive on watching people-
He can hear you too, so-
When he releases a new video, August, I, um, I live off of you jumping off buildings. They ranked him. Uh, can we get Jackson? Can we get again- Jackson, like, what are you gonna say? "Hey, Grumpy Gaming, hop on here." You know what, I'm just- I am going to refer to people by their actual names.
Yeah, no one cares. Maybe if we ever get bigger.
Yeah, I don't- I'm not too particularly worried about people, um, seeing this and stalking me. I, um, seeing as I currently have-
Unless I said your full name on stream, that would be a little bit concerning.
Unless I have a- I have a grand total of two. Two viewers, so y'all.
Yeah.
And neither of them sent a message, so who knows?
Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yep, we can.
Yay! By the way, I got my palak sender, and I talk really weird. And I also make crazy sounds.
So, I have to ask, so, um, I do have- I do have two viewers, it's pretty impressive for me, I must say.
I think I have two viewers on YouTube and Twitch.
Are you- are they the same viewers though? Are you comfortable with- are you comfortable with me using your name on stream?
Yeah.
Okay, good, because I'm not calling- because I'm not calling. I'm not calling you, Ghost. Um-
Oh well, hi there, uh, NLB Kinghamster III. Wait, wait, NLB Kinghamster III, um-
Holy heck, it's night! Oh my god, no!
I hate baby zombies!
Okay, you see, this is why I- this is why I am imposing a curfew. Aug, I don't have any food. Um, I found this like pit over there filled with cows, but I don't wanna burn them to get food, because-
Yeah.
Oh my god, all the monsters in the town hall terrify me, okay? The town hall needs to be lit up.
Um, you know what, let's- now is the best time. Oh god, zombie, baby zombie. Okay, 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 okay? Um, how many mo- Okay, uh, okay, nothing. No, this isn't that bad. Just, but yeah. There's no time like the present to do something kind of productive, anyway.
Alright, yeah, um, to complete my house design, I'm gonna need some blue wood.
So-
Sourced exclusively from another-
Alright, that's- that's effectively lit. Alright, so let's look at- so let's get- let's get the show on the road, let's, um, ah, spider. Spider. Let's, um, start this-
No, we can't start yet. No, we have to wait till 2:30.
Brendan in the game.
That is-
Said that I-
In a couple minutes.
Said I would be on in five, like, um, 27 minutes ago. Uh, can y'all sleep? Again, it feels like not- It doesn't feel- it feels kinda weird to ask, but like, alright.
No, Henry, I don't know how to sleep.
I have started moving my bed into the house.
Imagine knowing how to sleep?
You may not rest there. Oh shoot, Creeper!
I put it-
Aw, man!
That Creeper blew up my whole house, he was right behind me. Ah, that, that-
Ah, I was- I was gonna build a shield, okay, so I put- I put a spiral staircase in my house thinking it would save space, but I don't know if it's actually saving me.
Don't you hate- don't you hate when, um-
When you're Creeper aw mans?
No, when you're- when you're trying to-
Oh Creeper!
But there's monsters nearby, and then you turn around and the Creeper's behind you.
You see, this is curfew. This is why we need a curfew.
Oh my god, that was the second Creeper that knocked up behind me.
Nick, tell me you see these skeletons. This is-
I see them.
This is- Ah, this is why I don't like playing on hard mode.
We're on hard mode?
Maybe.
Wait, Nick, I can't hear you.
What do you mean you can't hear me? Oh my god, there's a Creeper, Henry! Your house!
Henry!
Your house. Oh...
Henry, can you- is Nick talking?
Yeah. You're kidding me, right? You're kidding me, right?
Unfortunately, no.
Oh, I can hear you, Nick!
Mm-mm! Did this- And now I have to spend my time.
I can't hear anybody right now.
Fixing this-
Lucas, is there something up with your internet connection?
It's not my internet connection.
All of us can hear each other in time.
This is why we should- this is why I'm supposed to sleep, this is why I don't let- this is why I don't play this game.
It's the Xbox app.
I-
Oh, now Jackson joined.
This takes so long to build, ah!
Oh, let's see, can we invite Jackson to the party?
Hmm, I-
Tell him to in-
I can't just rebuild this. Every five minutes, why? I build the-
It's not people, it's-
Skeckikins are shooting me.
Oh, I had another spider jockey.
Okay, we gotta sleep.
Yeah, I'm ready.
I've been telling you to sleep for like 10 minutes now, actually. Um-
Okay, let's sleep, let's sleep.
I mean, my bed might have just gotten blown up, but whatever. Ah, you see, there's- You've killed me. You've killed me by blowing up my house. Did you- did you really have to? I- I had 20 levels.
Oh boy, here comes Jackson!
Hello, Jackson.
I had 20 levels before. I'm on the mountain, I'm on a mountain in the middle of nowhere, and I'm dying.
Yeah, we really really need to sleep.
Well then, don't join- don't join the act, okay?
My house has already been blown up. Please sleep now, before it gets blown up more. It's not easy, please.
Okay.
Thank you. Alright, um, so let me look at the damage. Uh, I've lost my door, I've lost a lot of oak logs. So, I'm gonna need those. Um, and I've lost- Okay, so I'm gonna need- and I've-
I'm gonna be dead soon.
Could somebody give me- could somebody give me some oak logs?
Oh my god, there's an enderman after me.
Um, I'm sure I could.
Could you go get me some oak logs? Somebody, I just- I wanna- I wanna-
Yeah, you know, that wasn't the smartest decision I've ever made. I aggressed an enderman and have health with a stone sword.
So, um, the next time someone doesn't sleep, I am kicking them off the server.
Henry, no. That's not fair.
Come on.
I mean, I see what I see what to do, but-
See, I get some coordinates, I'm in the middle of nowhere.
Uh, yeah, someone give Jackson coordinates.
Spawn's at 0:0.
Okay.
Roughly.
Um, I don't even know where I went.
I just kinda went shadow round.
Well, I go to the shadow round all the time. It's a nice place.
Did you, um-
Oh, also, Jackson, I know we're in a-
Ah, dang it!
I know we're live streaming Minecraft, but, uh, do you want a Mandalorian custom cape?
I don't even have mine yet.
I know, but when you get it, cuz I got enough fabric-
Could somebody cut down a couple of oak trees for me, so I can fix my house?
I love non-Minecraft related conversations in a Minecraft video. They really just make the day. Let's see, I need to include-
Oh, Brendan! Hello.
Hello.
Including my audio.
It's a- it is a beautiful giant block of the house.
Oh, wait, we have to include our audio?
Oh yeah, you guys probably have to press Include your audio.
Yeah.
Okay, one second. Let me just do that.
Otherwise, I'm pretty sure August might not be able to actually-
Um, that's okay, I still- I still lost a ton of- Uh, I still lost a ton of plank, I still lost a ton of logs, which I don't much take- An absurd amount of time to get. And some doors, although fortunately, I accidentally made seven spruce doors, and I still have a couple left, so we should be good. Um, hey. Unless those got blown up too, that would- that would kinda suck. Ah, alright, so, let's- oh, wait, I have a ton of- why do I have so many spruce doors?
Everyone who's gonna be here for the town meeting needs to be here, so-
Wonderful, let's start, and like, once I-
Oh, well, there goes Lucas. And Jackson.
They're- they're gone, okay.
Ah, I think that was-
Oh, I think- Lucas, Lucas hasn't been able to hear us, so like-
Oh, how do I even hear you?
Okay, here's Lucas. Uh, Henry, here's 13 oak logs.
I have so- thank you, uh, I have so many sticks, dang it! I'm really clutching up here. Where's my axe? Did I actually knock-
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I'm including my audio.
We could hear you the whole time.
Oh, well, I died, I know, I know, but I died, I- My axe-
Oh wait.
Yeah.
Wait, Nick, where'd you said- you said there were planks somewhere?
In the Xbox app.
Thank you. Thank you, I-
Um, in the Xbox app, and it should be including my audio.
It doesn't give me an option to include my audio.
Alright, uh, I don't remember if that's where, uh, there might be an extra slab, but I'll just add that real quick.
It automatically includes it then.
Alright, there we go, that is- that's effectively what it was. That's effectively what it was, let me grab some slabs and just kinda-
Oh, by the way, Jackson, we made a diamond.
The what?
By the way, I have a lot of iron.
Okay, and now we have diamonds too. We have one diamond.
Alright, so here's what we're gonna do, so let's just-
I got it from repairing Henry's home, because Nick set it on fire. I mean, naturally, that's what Nick does.
Why do I have- okay, so I do- I have a ton of arrows. It's pretty cool, wow.
Oh, Jackson, there's-
Alright, so let me just- Let me get- let me get ready here for the town- for the town meeting, and we're gonna have a fun time.
Wait one second, Henry, I'm exploring a huge mountain.
Oh, that's what I was-
That is-
I'm gonna make me an iron sword, because I can't stand running around with like stone anymore.
I'm running around starving to death.
Um, meet me back at the house then, Jackson.
Lucas, I don't know how to tell you this, but we're half an hour behind schedule.
Oh, well, you know what, that was cuz my Mandalorian needed a cape.
The schedule that you set.
Oh, yeah, so, yeah.
Lucas, see in your Mandalorian. Alright, are we ready for the town meeting?
Uh, no, I'm getting caught.
Yeah, I'm just running around.
Yep, I'm ready for this.
I'll be ready soon, I'm just cooking food, cuz I'm starving.
Yeah, I need some food too, Jackson.
Oh, Brendan, does anyone know whose- does anyone know whose cows those are over there?
It's like a community. I built it as like a community.
Not the ones that are fenced in, the ones that are just in a hole?
Uh, those are, um, uh, what's it?
Give me your weed, give me your weed, now we have four weeds.
I'm- okay, you know what, I'm just gonna kill them, cuz-
Yeah, cuz we have a-
Because I'm just gonna kill them, because we've got a cow.
Nick, I need a couple of seconds.
Oh my god!
Don't take my iron!
No, I'm not, I'm just- I'm just cutting my iron away.
I'm just gonna kill them, I'm just gonna kill them because we have that community thing.
Someone stole our music disc.
So, yeah.
I didn't have a music disc. Guys, guys, somebody stole our music disc.
I had another copy of-
Oh dang it, I set myself on fire. I did not see that, I did not think that through, I may have- I just set myself on fire, okay.
Uh, cats.
Is somebody gonna talk about the music disc someone just stole?
Doesn't matter, Lucas.
We can talk about it at the town meeting.
We have so many music-
But we need to have a town meeting in the first place, cheese guys!
Yeah, Lucas.
Yep.
Why don't you hurry up?
I'm just getting some flash, you know?
Set yourselves on fire, cows! I love doing this, except they're so crowded together that it's not actually very functional.
I'm sorry, Lucas.
Set yourself on- set yourselves on fire!
My needs were greater than yours.
Blood for the Blood God!
Please do not set yourselves on fire.
Okay.
Did you- wait, did you take this through? Oh, I mean, I took damage really. I just took damage.
Blood for the Blood God! Cows for the cow god!
Wow, Henry, your house is really nice. Do you care if it was set on fire accidentally?
Uh, yes, I would be very mad.
That's one question. Of course he would-
Fun enough, I've actually been, you know, I've actually been building things.
One critique, one critique, I love your staircase, I just think the first stair should be closer to the door, so that you can actually walk. Like, from the- you don't have to walk around.
The first staircase?
I know.
What staircase?
Nick, you're missing music discs now too. You're missing more music discs.
Yeah.
It's, um, in pretty good shape, alright, um, okay.
Someone's taking them, and I'm sure it's like Miles.
Oh no, no, I just said- I just said-
Henry, why did you set your house on fire?
Okay, got it.
Someone took another of your diamond skies too, you had eight.
Okay.
There's a trap on door.
Wait, Nick, didn't you have eight diamonds yesterday?
I have more, okay.
And I took one.
Okay, Nick, now I can't- I can stop like accusing you.
And now you have- now you have six.
It is shockingly easy to-
Okay.
It is shocking easy to set things on fire when you have a flint steel in your hand.
Civilians, get off the stage.
Wait, one second, wait, 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 hold up, hold up, guys. I just need a couple of seconds to investigate something.
Oh really, you do now? Okay, so, um-
Okay, okay, I'm coming back, I'm coming back. I investigated.
Nick, well, um, Nick, let's- let's get in- let's get in the town hall, we have to-
Yes, 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 and I am- Wait, what, Jackson?
Is there anyone in my chat? Nope, not.
August is my chat. Say hi to August, guys.
Hi, August.
August, good evening.
Lucas, I'm sorry, but, uh-
Alright, let me, uh, let me pull my speech up.
My needs were greater than yours.
Oh, Jackson. And we're gonna start, I'm gonna start by giving my victory speech, and then we will move into actual laws and acts that we need to discuss. And then, I don't think- there hasn't been much treason, so I don't think we need to execute anyone, like.
Excellent.
Jackson, dude, you see what I did?
Alright, civilians, get off the stage.
No, I didn't.
Y'all, y'all ready for this?
Jackson, come over here, come over here, come over here.
Alright, let's do this, okay. Here we go. Ready for the- ready- are you ready for this?
Yep.
Dang it, it's unsetting.
Ah, we gotta sleep, guys.
Minecraft, there's a log.
Everybody sleep, we'll be back tomorrow morning.
Yay, sleep! Greg, it's too bad, right?
Okay, okay.
No!
Here, uh, Jackson, look in our- Jackson, look in our chest, there's one in there.
Don't worry, I'll find it in a minute.
Alright, let's- let's- okay, we'll sleep, and then first thing tomorrow morning, we have our town meeting. I need to install the one player's- I need to install a one-player sleep mod.
Yeah, but it's not that easy on Bedrock.
I- 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 it's actually pretty easy.
No, it's not.
I can download, I can just download stuff off the interwebs and then apply it.
Yeah, but it's not easy to create it.
Okay, uh, you guys gonna sleep?
I'm sleeping, we are sleeping. I'm sleeping.
Brendan, sleep.
I'm sleeping.
Nick, Henry.
There we go. Okay, everybody, back to the town- back to the town hall! For real this time, we're gonna do it, ready?
Real this time.
Alright, hold on, guys, can we wait a second? I gotta do something real quick.
I'm here!
This is, um, okay, so this is incredibly promi- we're- we know- we know what we're doing.
That is not acceptable.
Wait, Jackson, you're not wearing anything on my screen. No, 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 he's Steve, he's Steve.
Oh, oh god.
Die.
You have a water bucket. I hope you have a water bucket, Brendan.
Yes, you do, you have full armor.
I mean, I have armor.
Okey dokey.
Yeah.
Okay, you're ready.
Finally.
Yeah, you're Steve.
Yeah, put that torch down somewhere.
Well, guess what, my skin doesn't work for you.
Alright.
Alright.
Jackson, Jesus, Jackson! That was Jackson.
No, Lucas!
Jackson just stripped all of your wood over there.
No! Jackson. Jackson.
I did not do that, I did that on Greg's house.
I didn't even have an axe in my inventory.
Jackson, you stripped- okay, but you stripped-
No, I'm just doing it- I'm just doing it to Greg's house.
But you did it to my house, and to the town. Okay, but yeah, but someone did it to the town meeting and to my house, so-
That- I didn't strip your house, but I know who stripped it.
Nick, Nick, come in here. Nick? Nick? Nick?
Nick, Nick, Nick had to go, remember?
No, but he came- he came back, and he was like, alright, guys, let's do this. Okay, um, I'm in. I'm gonna nudge him off the stage.
Just punch him.
Dang it, it didn't work. Move, we're gonna-
There we go!
Alrighty then!
There we go. Let's move this way.
Oh wait, Nick, you back?
Is my skin working for any of you?
No.
Yours is just steep.
Yeah, I can- I- no, I can see you. I can see your lemur with a femur, then.
Wait, what?
As long as the person who's streaming can see me, then I don't care. Lucas, I'm a lemur with a femur!
Town meeting.
No, no.
Alright, do this. Alright, let's do this, ready? Oh, heck.
Just, just do it.
Three, three, two. What do you mean, hold up?
No, no, I didn't know, hold up.
Town meeting right now, we're not holding up anymore, and, alright, let's do this.
Okay, citizens.
Jackson, no, he's gonna kill me, Jackson's gonna kill me.
I'm not gonna kill him!
Stop punching each other.
Okay, everybody shut up. Okay. Today, we enter a new era. An era of peace, prosperity, for the Republic. An era of victory! Today, we are united under the flag of the Republic. Oh goodness.
This is a mess.
Just start it.
Guys, stop it, we're gonna start executing. We're gonna start executing.
Oh, I'm eating flesh.
Hit off the stage, or we kill you.
Ow!
Alrighty then, and alright, so basically, okay, you know what?
This is terrible. Alright, let's cut to the chase.
You've got-
Uh, drugs are banned.
Okay, so we're- Okay, so we're gonna do a couple of things. We need to go over a couple of things today, if you could all just like, sit here.
Can you just like chill?
Yeah, please, can you just chill?
I'm chilling.
I'm just stealing a horse over here.
Okay, so, could you please chill? So we have a couple of things-
Ow!
Things I wanna go over today.
Oi!
Because I will-
Behave!
Okay, um, Lucas, you're the secretary- Lucas, you're the Secretary of State, you should be setting a veteran-
They're gone.
Jackson, no, Jackson, I'm gonna die.
Yes, you deserve to.
Jackson, stop, I'm done, I'm done. Jackson! Jackson!
Alright, so, we have a couple of things that we need to- no!
I literally was in third person too.
Off the stage.
I'm gathering all your stuff.
Yeah, and you're not gonna give it back, Jackson, I had a music disc there too.
You've infiltrated the Capitol Building, sir, it's illegal.
Sir, that's-
Jackson, drop all my- Jackson, Jackson.
I will, I will.
Okay, so, first thing we wanna go over, drugs are illegal.
Well, I don't care, I'm still gonna snort some stuff with that.
Drugs are illegal, if we catch anybody doing drugs or dealing drugs, they will be promptly executed.
Punished. No, I don't know exactly how. Alright, moving on, moving on, one more, so, moving on, one thing we need to talk about is the Creeper explosions. Are you done with the Creeper explosions? Yes, I am, okay, so, here are a couple of new things that we want- that we're gonna put in place here.
That's mine, Jackson, that's my food, and those are my bones too.
Oi, stop it, both of you!
I'm starving to death!
Both of you, stop!
It's not me, Nick, I didn't do anything.
He's killing me!
My god, can you sit still for like three seconds?
Yes. Um, is that- is that government property?
It was so bad, he drowned. He didn't really drown himself.
Uh, Nick, is that government property?
What?
Did he drown on government property?
Yeah, he just drowned on government property.
Alright, so, Creeper holes. Uh, so, then, the fir- so, until, so, first thing we are going to do-
Lucas, throw that stone right away!
We are going to build a wall, and it's going to be a great wall.
It's going to be absolutely tremendous, we're gonna build a tremendous wall, we've put a tremendous amount of work into this.
This is not a good joke, I apologize, moving on.
We need to build a wall.
We're gonna build a big- we're going to build a large blackstone wall around the village, so we can stop with the Creeper. They're not cool. Until that happens-
Can I please have my shit?
Until that happens, we are going- until that happens, we are going to impose a curfew.
Yeah, you can easily make sure of that.
Sleep at night.
Also, if you cause a Creeper hole, you have to patch the Creeper hole up.
Yes, and if you are the cause of a Creeper hole, you- you have to patch the Creeper hole. It's not that hard. Uh, don't like the face property, that- that includes, but is not limited to, stripping the bark off of logs.
Stop stripping the town hall of its logs! Not cool, guys!
Stop stripping the bark off of logs, unless you intend to replace all of those logs.
Does anyone wanna play some, uh, my flex?
No.
So-
You wanna give me stuff back, maybe?
Yes, Jackson, I will give it back if you don't kill me, okay?
So, I need-
You killed me!
How many-
Shut up, civilians!
Yeah, man, you stole my stuff, okay?
No, I was giving it, I was literally, he was giving it back.
Jackson, I'm gonna put it in a chest, you make a chest.
By, in the next- in the next 10 minutes, I expect a payment of 10 logs for the government.
Jackson!
Henry, can I borrow your fucking steel really quick?
Stop it, Jackson!
Can I borrow your fucking steel?
Because he stole my stuff!
Hey, Henry, look who's in your window.
If you kill me.
Trespassing!
Look who's in your window.
Trespassing, trespassing.
Alright, guys, listen up, I've got TNT, I'm not afraid to use it. Sit down and shut up, or you're getting it.
I'm gonna make Jackson his chest, and if he attacks me, I'm just gonna-
Brandon, I'm very bushed, like, AJ's sweet.
Nick, that's on my podium, don't, don't do that.
Right, guys, who wants to die first?
Jackson, Jackson.
I'll do it.
That, that's an awesome.
I owe him a shield bracelet, so.
That's actually awesome.
Nick, do you have our, do you have, like, the, something iron on, on you?
I do not, it was stolen.
By who?
No idea.
You guys, look below you.
Jackson.
I needed that to make armor.
Alright, guys.
Lucas, that's not mine!
So.
I know, I know, that was an accident.
Uh, stealing is bad, if you're caught stealing, then you'll be prosecuted.
Yep, in fact, yeah, prosecution is going to come swiftly.
Speaking of prosecutions, there's some crimes we need to deal with. Some people have already committed several crimes, so, we need to, uh, deal with those accordingly.
Indeed, we do.
Alright, Henry, would you like to explain the crimes to the people?
And, I don't think.
Don't, don't kill me, don't kill me, don't kill me.
Execute those responsible.
Oh, well, okay, that felt good.
Well, there's one execution.
Yeah, there's one, okay, um.
Lucas is stealing, I literally saw you in the act, kill him, kill him, kill him for theft, he left.
He left?
I'll do items back, I'm putting them in the chest, I was actually gonna return them to him before they despond, if he were gonna let him talk.
That was my chest, that was mine.
Uh, Jackson's gone.
Okay, so, where's, where's, what happened to our iron though, actually?
I left my stuff back.
Yeah, I'm gonna put it in a chest, okay?
Whoever stole our iron is.
Actually, no, I'll just drop it to you, okay?
This weren't, this can't, this went wonderfully.
Here. Here's your torches.
But actually, who stole our iron?
Oh, no, that's my bucket, that's my bucket. Um, that's yours, that's yours.
Someone with full, I saw someone with full iron armor, just saying. Were you that iron, Jackson?
Jackson?
I swear, lag.
Okay. Now, Brendan, you had full iron armor and iron gear, why would that be?
Mining.
Surely, you haven't been stealing from anyone.
I didn't steal from anyone.
No, I've literally been mining, and Lucas, I had twenty-eight state.
Viper among us, and it's not us, cuz we're being stolen from too.
Yeah, we were stealing from them.
There's a thief among us.
Stealing yourself.
Oh, you had twenty-eight state.
Stealing from yourself, just to.
Yeah, give me, uh, twenty-eight state.
And when I will find them, I will kill them, fluff this.
Didn't have twenty-eight. Cuz I.
Oh no, this is where the dragon.
There's.
And I lagged out. You'll love to see it.
Oh, there's a witch and a.
Nope, uh, I lagged out. Everything just like, throws up, you'll love to see it.
Okay, I need to get out of this crafting thing.
Hey, Lucas.
Thing. Yeah, everybody. Everybody sleep.
Ooh, boy.
There's a thief among us, when I will find out who it is, they will be prosecuted, and my wrath is not something.
King me.
Okay, good.
I would hope so.
Alright, love.
My wrath is not some.
I don't know.
I'd feed, feed the cows.
You know, always a good time when your wifi goes out in the middle of a stream.
Oh, is that what happened?
No, creeper! Blew up my entire house. I didn't even know creeper holes could get that big.
Please.
That's what she said.
I have no, I have no slopping place, because creeper blew up my house.
Then, we, then hop out of the server for a minute.
Hold on, I left a bed in the town hall, I'll just go sleep there.
Alright, I'm sleeping.
Who broke the bed in the town hall, this is not funny.
Who, what?
Someone broke the bed I left in the town hall, this is not funny.
Jackson, we have the, um.
Well, I mean, there, I saw exactly one person going into the town hall.
What?
Y'all gonna sleep?
I broke it, but Henry picked it up.
Is it morning?
Yep.
I broke it out of a joke, but Henry picked it up.
I'm not responsible for this, I just came up from Miles's boat ladder, and there was a creeper up there and it blew it up.
There's a creeper climbing up to our mountain.
Yes.
My house was blown up rather violently.
And, okay, now, now that this has happened, does everybody want walls around the village?
No, we need lights and walls and.
Yeah.
Yeah, and ban water in the area, because that takes out all the light, that's why, um, that's what happened.
Water on the ground, guys, it's, it, when you, like, place blocks to.
I, I take full responsibility.
When you place blocks to pick up the water, you destroy the path as well.
Alrighty then, um, so, I don't know what happened to, I don't know what happened to.
Can we go mining now?
I don't know what. Wait, wait a minute, wait a minute, what about all of, what about all of the logs you stripped?
Yeah, you guys gotta replace this.
Yeah, we just quit the hack.
I didn't strip those, I stripped Greg.
Or else you'll be prosecuted as criminals.
Greg likes.
You have to replace those.
No, Greg likes his logs, logs.
You gotta say, especially on the Capitol building, isn't that technically a crime against the city?
I didn't do that, I didn't do that, I only stripped this stuff on Greg, I'm not kidding. I know who did it, though.
Henry.
I know who did it too.
There is a very angry animal who wants to eat my booty.
Jackson, it was you.
No, it wasn't.
Oh, I killed it, I'm on half a heart.
Okay, I need, this is when I need my iron armor.
Armor!
Which, again, but someone stole my iron, so, don't know.
I didn't steal it.
Alright, Jackson and Lucas, how much to buy the property off, you guys?
That would be a stack of diamonds.
Okay.
Fifteen stacks of iron. Um.
Don't just put on that. Thank you.
Fifteen netherite.
Okay, keeping in mind that we are technically a, uh, uh, diarchy, we could, um, force you out of your land if you aren't giving us a reasonable rate.
No, you can't.
Yeah, yeah, they can, it's a diarchy.
No, I don't, I still.
This is not, this is not a constitutional republic, guys.
No, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, no, you can't.
Why do we need?
Henry does.
Blow things up.
You don't need.
Okay, but why not, but look, it's not even that mu, big of a mountain, let's just build our own, like, on top of Brendan's house.
Seriously.
Well. It would be fine, but.
Oh my gosh.
Does somebody have a furnace?
Yes, Jackson did have a furnace, it's with stacks of coal up, up at our mountain.
Why don't you come up, why don't you come up with a fair rate for your mountain, and then?
That is a fair rate.
That is a fair rate, we really want to.
A stack of diamonds and fifteen stacks of iron.
No.
And fifteen netherite.
A stack of di, I, I mean, I'd say two hundred diamonds is a fair rate.
Seriously.
Excuse me?
It's our house, we don't have, we don't have to sell it, especially cuz you've worked so hard at it.
You don't have to sell if you don't want to, but like.
And also, we, we like the area.
Wait, bro, wait, is that, why is there a, whose mineshaft is this?
Probably my my own.
No, there's, no, it was, who, was, oh, wait, did I make this?
Anyway, guys, can you, like, stop accusing me of being an arsonist? Because as we just saw, it's very easy to set things on fire accidentally.
But you are. Who's carrying flint and steel in their inventory regularly?
I don't carry a flint and steel in my inventory.
Exactly.
Neither do I.
I have flint and steel and lava buckets in my inventory.
Okay, that's a problem.
Yeah, I should probably, I'm, I'm gonna, like, go burn the flint and steel. Burn the flint and steel.
Here, wait, let me see, where does this go? Oh, dang it, it's not, oh, bro, there's so many, this is, oh, I've, I've dug down into this stupid connecting system of mineshafts. And I regret it.
And in the process, I burned the entire village.
Wait, does the meeting over?
You guys kinda ruined it.
Yeah, wait, Henry, what about the punishments we were about to administer?
That's cuz Henry was stealing my stuff, or, no, not Henry, Lucas.
Did you just accuse the leader of F.T.?
This is the, Nick, this is the, um, what's it called, this is the, this is where the double, this is where the double scars are.
Alright.
Oh, yeah.
So I guess, since it's under my house, should we monopolize it?
Yes.
I guess we, we have, we are the only ones right now who have access to them.
Yeah, okay, um, if any of you guys find, like, a lava pool, I need that. I must procure the blue wood from my house.
I know where lava pools are, but I won't tell you.
I must procure the blue wood from my house.
Alright, I could probably, I'm gonna, I think I'm gonna stop, this has been going on for too long.
Say, what happened to that mine shaft?
Jackson, let's work on our house.
Hold on, I'm, he's, I'm gathering food.
Our house, wink, wink, wink.
I'm gathering food!
Let's work on our house, wink, wink, wink.
Ah, yes, wink.
Lucas, that's kinda suspicious.
I love my house wink.
Yeah, 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 I'll be there, I'll be there, I'll be there.
That's kinda suspicious.
What is suspicious?
I'm beginning to suspect. I'm beginning to suspect that you may be hiding something.
We're not hiding anything, actually.
We actually always hide something.
Nothing yet.
There's a cow inside the fence, this is terrifying.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, I just bred the cows and murdered some.
There's like, three baby cows trapped inside the fence.
Baby cows, I'm coming.
No, don't kill them, they're part of our farm.
Yeah, but they're babies.
Yes, I know, and they grow, and we breed them with our parents.
Alabama. Alabama, that's a fuss.
Okay, I have a lot of food now.
Goodbye.
Okay, Jackson, come on.
I need iron right now, and diamonds.
Oh, yeah, let's go, um, mining, Jackson.
Follow the road, follow the yellow, yellow, road, road is yellow, road needs repairs.
Hopefully, it needs to be upgraded to concrete or brick or stone or something.
Follow the yellow.
From the pa.
Follow the yellow.
I guess I'm here.
Oh, I found iron, I love, it happens.
Follow the yellow brick yellow.
Hey, Nick is in our house, hey, Nick?
Follow the yellow brick yellow, oh, hi, guys, look, it's a secret room, wow, that's cool.
It's not secret?
It's not secret.
There's literally glass going outside, not that secret, Nick.
And I, and I told you what I was building.
I'm standing on the edge of a cliff, this would be a perfect time to knock me off.
Alright, yeah, I need, uh.
That was a treason, though.
They just knocked me off. That's treason, execute him!
No, Nick, you didn't fall all the way.
But still.
You threw the leader off a cliff, I think that counts as.
Jackson threw me off. Yeah, Jackson's trying to kill me.
Like, a leader off a cliff, sounds an awful lot like treason.
Jackson, I will be.
Alright, guys, emergency town meeting.
No, I was just showing you what it felt like.
Emergency town meeting, y'all.
It feels like, you've done that before to me, Jackson.
I know, but it was a joke.
But before it was a joke.
Everyone assemble at the town center.
Okay, let it, let us get some stuff.
Throwing a leader, throwing a leader off a cliff, sounds an awful lot like treason.
That's like, really, really treasonous.
That's like, the only thing worse, I mean, you defaced the town, you've defaced the, uh.
The only thing worse.
I did that, that was Jackson.
Jackson has defaced the capital and Lucas threw one of the leaders off a cliff. This is treason of the highest order.
I did it, I didn't do it to Henry's house, I did it to Greg's house.
I'm Henry's.
No, I didn't, that was Brendan.
You did, you did that. Alright, guys, treason of the highest order.
Saw Brendan do it. Yeah, we should, we should probably execute them.
You're on trial.
It wasn't me, it was Greg.
Capital crime, wood.
Are you interested in being thrown out, are you interested in being in, in being exiled?
Alright, guys, you can be, yeah, we can execute you like, twenty times, and keep the items, or we can exile you. Your choice.
This llama just stole my chest!
Or.
I just realized that I'm at, I just realized that I'm at diamond level, and I dug into a lava thing.
Oh, you did? Gimme, gimme.
I dug into a lava. I dug into a lava pit.
Lucas, we have a cat llama now.
Wow, he's a lead, and makes.
Okay, Henry, I'm coming, don't do anything to lava pit.
Name it, Lamy.
No.
I require the lava.
No, he didn't give it to me.
Lamy, Lamy's a lamb, I thought.
I mean, he is, but he's also a llama now.
Oh, yeah.
I need it.
Lamy, like, like Jed's stuffed animal, Lamy?
My brother has one too.
Chad.
I just.
Chad.
Come here.
Jed Spencer, more like Jed Dobin.
To say Chad, because I'm a cheese.
I'm gonna burn to death, no, I won't, ah, that's why we keep water buckets in our inventories, kid, woo!
Yep, I always have a water bucket in my inventory, particularly when mining.
I should always carry one, but I only carry one like.
Oh, I am so close to death.
Yes.
Oh, I love death.
I feel that I am so close to diamonds! I'm just kidding, I don't feel anything.
I have eighteen diamonds.
I don't feel anything.
Where did you get, where, where'd you get those, Brendan?
Called strip mining.
Funny how we had a lot of diamonds and they suddenly disappeared.
Miles has diamonds.
No, Miles had like.
Miles has been less suspicious.
We just have one diamond.
No, I, no, I know where Miles got his diamonds, because I was with him when he got them.
Jack.
Of course, the only time I go mining is by myself. Of course the only time I go mining is by myself. And that's the only time I find diamonds.
Well, I, well, I mean, going mining by yourself is like, the most logical thing.
If you go mining by yourself, your friends can't like, kill you.
Split, you don't have to split the diamonds.
Me, I just only have one.
I'm talking about mining without anybody else in the world whatsoever.
Lucas, we have a lot of stones, this is why.
Alright, I need two more water buckets.
I got a bunch of apples, I don't know why, but it feels-
And then I'm sure you can find.
But it feels- Alright, I think I'm actually gonna get off.
Yeah, I'm just gonna get off right after-
I've just gone through like seven stone pickaxes. I said goodbye, yellow brick road, sunshine, killing people.
Do you wanna sleep?
Jackson, you know-
Wait, our beds were stolen again?
Jackson. Can anybody hear?
Lucas, our beds were stolen again?
Yes, Lucas, I can hear you.
He didn't hear you.
Yeah, we can hear you.
Yes!
You know that video about the guy who got the USB end of a, uh, cord stuck in his iPad? Yes, no?
Yes, I do.
I'm coming! Uh, it just happened to me, I got it out though with tweezers.
Does anybody else have a, uh, does anyone have a diamond pickaxe?
Uh, no, no.
Lucas, our beds were stolen, so I made new ones again.
Henry, I'm gonna use three of our diamonds to make a pickaxe.
I'm sure, you know, and I just, I just cut those beds down.
See ya.
I know.
It, it has to be somebody on the server, Nick, it's literally probably you.
No, it's not.
Evidence?
Our beds keep getting stolen.
Yeah, don't accuse people without evidence.
I, again, I, Brendan steals so much stuff, wait, Jackson, check if we have our diamond.
They're coming, hold on, we're getting attacked.
We still have our diamond, I'll make our beds.
Oh, Rohan is watching the stream.
Jackson, our beds, I moved our beds. Nobody stole them. Oh my god.
You stole them, Lucas!
What's mine?